Good evening. Welcome. It is March 25th. It's just after 7 o'clock PM, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council's Committee of the Whole to order, and we'll begin with a roll call. Clerk?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Wonderful. We also have some special guests. We'll get to that in just a moment. First, are there any additions to the agenda? Or any staff reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to approval of minutes of our previous meeting. There were minutes from March 11. Are there any corrections or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any corrections or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we'll move to public input, and we will start public input. Well, I got two cards I'll read, and then we'll start with some of our guests this evening. The two people wanted not to speak but just be recognized. First is Bishop King James Underwood, and Dr. Evelyn Underwood wanted to be recognized but not speak on the issue of the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, and have their concerns about the resolution noted. So, they are present with those concerns for the record. And we will then move on to a presentation tonight from the Whole Sister City group, including our guests from Malawi and from China. And I'm going to introduce Councilmember Dennis Roberts to start this off and introduce some of our special guests. Dennis?
Right. So, as you know, the Sister City program in Urbana has been very active in the last several years. We have currently a project that's going forward that has to do with the -- a new grant program called the Sino-African Initiative. Part of the success of that grant is based on a previous work that we've done in Africa through Sister Cities International work. And we have here guests from Malawi as part of the exchange who have arrived in our community recently. They've just arrived on Saturday, and they have come as guests to the city council to say hello to us. So, I think I'd like to turn this over to the project manager of the Sino-African Initiative, Chris Store, to introduce our guests, and maybe can introduce them all a little bit. They don't have to come forward, but we do have some that would like to present thoughts to the city council.
Thank you, Dennis. It's a pleasure to come before the council again and report on the activities of the Sino-African Initiative. This is a wonderful development project supported by the Gates Foundation. We're pleased to have two representatives from the participants. Fortunately, they have other engagements this evening, so they'll have to leave a little bit early. But I'd like to introduce first Mr. Vua Dixon Vua Firi from Zomba, Malawi, who leads a delegation of six from that city to participate in the visit with city offices, some of our sanitation facilities here, and for the group to learn a little bit about how we handle our composting and waste. I'd also like to introduce Dr. K. Rong Lin from Sun Yat-Sen University, Haizhou District, who's also -- Haizhou District, you may remember, is also a sister city of Urbana, and he's from Guangzhou, People's Republic of China. With that, Mr. Firi?
May I address of Urbana City, first receive our thanks for the opportunity accorded to me and my friends from Malawi to come and be in your midst this evening and express the purpose of our visit. Before I proceed, I'd like to introduce my friends. As I call their names, I'd like them to stand so that you see that sitting in the back row. We have in the group Mr. Alec Edward Chima, who is Acting Director of Administration in the council. And we have Mr. Ian Dolosi, who is engineer for the city council. And Mrs. Fatma Ahmed Beema, who is the vice-chairman of the committee. I'm the chairman, and she's my vice. We have Mrs. Elizabeth Chingaipe, who is a public health and environmental officer and also a member of the local Sister City Committee. And we also have Mr. Innocent Malomo, who is in the Health Directorate of the city council -- of the city of Zomba. That's the composition of my delegation. As clearly indicated by Mr. Store, Dr. Store earlier on, the purpose of our coming here is actually to learn from the more experienced city council. Zomba has been a town for quite some time. It was the former capital city of Malawi, established there by the British administrators who ran the country from about 1891 until 1964, when the country attained independence. But soon after independence, and particularly after attaining the republican status in 1966, the first president of Malawi, the late was Dr. Kamuzubanda, decided that Zomba was a bit too far south as a capital city. He decided that it was necessary to move it into the more central place, which is Li Longwei, so that south and north and the central can easily -- more easily be coordinated politically, administratively, and otherwise. So, Zomba lost its status as a capital city in 1975. But nonetheless, it's a very important city because it has got a lot of educational institutions. It has got the University of Malawi, biggest constituent college of chancellor college, its administrative central offices also in Zomba. Zomba has got many secondary schools around it, a theological college, apart from the other institutions like the Kobe barracks of the Malawi Army, the Malawi Defense Force, a police training school. There are many institutions, so it's really a very, very important town as far as Malawi is concerned. It also has the headquarters, national headquarters for statistics. The National Examination Board, Administration's Board is also in Zomba. So, despite having lost the status of being a capital city, it has been regaining its importance over the years. And it was a municipality from 1979 until more recently, I think some three or so years ago, when it was decided that should become a city once again. It is a very big, 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 big city, beautifully decorated with natural trees and exotic ones, and the emblem we have is Floridet, Zomba. Zomba, a beautiful city of natural trees and bushes and so on. Now, we have come here to learn by contact, by seeing, by going around, how this city is organized. And by being here tonight, we're already learning a lot, how the council here actually does its business. We've been taken out already to some places of interest, so that when we go back, we carry with us something. This morning, for instance, I am professionally a librarian. I work for the University of Malawi, and I'm the head, the college librarian. And I networked with my friends at the Graduate School of Library and Information Science and the Mortensen Center. So, quite a bit of gain there for me personally, but also for the city of Zomba. And my friends are doing the same. Mr. Dolosi, with his engineering counterpart, and I think Alec will also meet his administrative friend, and it will be the same with also the later members of the delegation. So, the purpose of our being here is actually to learn, but at the same time to emphasize the fact that we value the relationship we have with the city of Urbana, and that we wish this relationship, this friendship, to grow from strength to strength for the benefit of the nation of Malawi, as well as the great United States of America. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lin, would you like to say a few words?
Dear member of the Urbana City Council, my name is K. Rong Lin. I'm from Sun Yat-Sen University, Haizhou District of Guangzhou City. And my research sphere is hydrology and water resource. I'm also a visiting scholar at the UIUC now. But I'm completing my visiting program, and I will return to China the day after tomorrow. So, yeah, I like Urbana City. I like here. So, the Haizhou District is one of the bigger and important district of the Guangzhou city, and it developed very fast these years. So, I'm also very pleased that as I can participate in the project of the Sino-African Initiative project. I think it's not only very useful for the people of the Zomba city, but also very helpful to exchange, to enhance the exchange of the culture among the United States of America, Africa, and China. So, yeah, I think this project will be carried on very successfully, and welcome everyone to visit China, visit the Haizhou District in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your words. I know that we appreciate your visit. I think that we have some tokens of friendship, and it might be that we could take some -- a few minutes here to make a friendship exchange with your representatives, as well as ours. So, would you -- yes, Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, I would like to note that Urbana is called Tree City, United States. And I know that Guangzhou is the Flower City. And now I find that Zomba is the -- something about trees I didn't quite get.
It has got beautiful, natural vegetation.
Okay, so all these three cities have something unique in common, and I think that's very interesting. So, we have a presentation for you for representatives from Malawi. We have a history of Urbana from 1833 to 2008. We're going to update this eventually. But we did a research in honor of our 175th birthday. And so I have one for Malawi and one for our delegate from Haizhou, and also have the key to the city of Urbana for Malawi. And I think we've given one to our Chinese visitors when they came last year. And finally, I have a pin for every one of your delegates, which is a little symbol of the city of Urbana, a tree, and it says "City of Urbana." So, let me give these to you.
Yeah, you can come.
The mayor will come around.
Okay. The mayor's going to come around. And if you would, if our visitors would please stay there, I think Chief Connolly from our police department would also like to step forward.
We have a few more, a few more special tokens here.
Representatives of the police department, and we want to welcome you to the city of Urbana, and we look forward to working with you. There's one for each.
Thank you.
You have a -- thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead. Go. Yeah?
Yes.
Would you offer a few tokens to present to you and also for the benefit of the city? But before we let you, just to let you know, we are very amused of people about this. We sing and dance, especially when things are nice and beautiful. So, we would like to give it to you before we do that. Would you please let the gentleman, let the gentleman come over? So, we have -- The song we are going to sing is "Partnership is Gold" in our own language. Ubaré, ubaré, ubaré. Uma goma jut. Ubaré, ubaré, ubaré. Uma goma jut. Azanga ubaré. Ahe, ubaré. Ubaré, uma goma jut. Azanga ubaré. Ahe, ubaré. Ubaré, uma goma jut. Ahe, uma goma jut. Ahe, uma goma jut. Right. Some documents, actually, prepared by the city of Zomba staff on the plans and the layout of the city, its programs. Yes. And we also have a special card just indicating heart of Malawi, which has been signed by all of us on dedication. This is a personal gift for you. In Malawi, the ladies will always have something to wrap around themselves.
All right. Thank you very so very much. Seeing the beginning of this -- Seeing the beginning of this interaction is so pleasing to me. I want to do one more, one more nice thing tonight, and I'd like to call Scotty Dossit forward.
Do I sit down here, or what?
You can just stand up right there, buddy. As you know, the Sister City program is totally volunteer effort. You know, we're not getting paid to be doing this. We're doing this from the love of our hearts. I'm smart enough to find people in my own neighborhood that I can trust and who will work hard for the community, and Scott Dossit's one of those. In the past, he managed the African Urban Poverty Alleviation Program. It was a $115,000 grant that the city of Urbana received from the Sister Cities International. I can pretty -- I'm pretty good at the beginning of something. I can get a grant for the city, but managing it is beyond my abilities. So, I know that I appreciate it so much. Scotty Dossit stepped forward and became the manager of that program, which we've completed, and we made our last visit in October of 2012. And all the guys and ladies that are in our audience from Zomba had an incredibly large part in achieving that goal. And so, I -- when I was in Zomba, Scott and I gave to all the members of the committee a certificate of appreciation, and I realized that there's one more person I'd like to appreciate. So, Scotty, I've got a letter, a certificate of appreciation for your efforts.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you all. It's great to be part of this partnership, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your visit here in Urbana. Thank you.
Why don't you tell them about this?
Ah, yes, and just by way of announcement, there is a public event open to the public. Anybody may be watching this at home. Tomorrow night, the Malawi Mixer. There will be music, food, dancing, new friends. That's Tuesday, the 26th of March, starting at 5:30, right here in downtown Urbana at the Independent Media Center at 202 South Broadway. It's a chance to meet some of the visitors from Malawi and share culture stories and more, and learn about the project. So, tomorrow night's Malawi Mixer is open to the public at 5:30. Thanks. Next tonight on our agenda, we have a presentation about Hamilton on the Park. This is the former Dunbar Court redevelopment plans. And good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. There's a PowerPoint presentation that I want to make sure --
Absolutely, go right ahead. We'll dim the lights here.
I'll do a little technical thing.
No problem. Take your time.
There we go.
Perfect.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Torian Priestley. I'm with the Benoit Group. Before I move on, I want to say thank you very much for giving me the opportunity on behalf of the Benoit Group and also the Housing Authority of Champaign County. And also, I'd like to say to Councilmember Smith, loved your John Coltrane ring. It's very, very nice, very nice. Somebody must be a really good person on the other line. But I'm here tonight to talk about an exciting project called Hamilton on the Park, originally Dunbar Court. Back in 2011, the Benoit Group competed against various developers throughout the United States to come together to win an RFQ that -- an RFP that came out from the Housing Authority of Champaign County. We were successful in winning that development partnership with the Housing Authority back in 2011, and that actually came to council and the mayor for a rezoning of the property of some of the single-family lots for this particular project. Now, I would go into the overall project itself. As I mentioned, this is a partnership not only with the Housing Authority and between the developer, but it's also with the city of Urbana, where we recognize that we have the technical experience in mixed finance-type projects, the financial capacity, and also the development experience to develop these type of properties. The overall project is a mixed finance and mixed income development that has a variety of different things as it relates to the overall financial feasibility of the project and their overall development. Also, we made sure that the use of NBE in Section 3 is very important on the project, and hiring local staff, and also being a sustainable steward within the community using Enterprise Green on our project. This is some of our experience, some of the projects that we've done over the past few years. The one at the top is Woodbridge at Parkway Village, which is a HOPE-6 development. It's actually independent senior deal, roughly 150 units, approximately 17.5, whereby we're in partnership with Fulton County Housing Authority back in Atlanta. I forgot to mention, we are headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. Also, we did a project called Arcadia Parkway Village, again, part of a HOPE-6 project. It was a multiple development of approximately about 50 some-odd acres whereby we did multifamily and also independent senior. Ashton Brown's Mill was a 100-unit independent senior development deal that we did in Atlanta, Georgia, in partnership with Atlanta Housing Authority. And we're currently working on Hamilton on the Park, which is our partnership with the Housing Authority of Champaign County. On the next slide, here's some other projects that we've worked on and are in the process of working on. One in particular is Providence's Sycamore Hills and Thornberry. We're currently working with the Housing Authority in the city of Champaign to develop on two tracts of land some additional multifamily properties in the Champaign area. And these are, again, a variety of other projects that we work from. And our projects range from anywhere from, as our lowest one actually is the Hamilton on the Park, which is 36 units, upwards of 300-plus units. This is our experience on the consulting and construction management side. We've done student housing, military housing, and also we've worked with Bermuda. I had the great experience of traveling back to Bermuda for about four years, back and forth as an advisory role for the entire government as it related to construction projects and also development projects that came in from developers all over the world. So, this is just a quick, broad brush of the Benoit Group's experience and capacity as it relates to overall real estate development and also construction management. As I mentioned, after we won the development partnership with the Housing Authority of Champaign County, we then went through another competitive round, which is the tax credits, low-income housing tax credits in the state of Illinois. We actually submitted an application to the Illinois Housing and Development Authority and competed against various other developers throughout the state with various projects throughout the state, and we were successful in winning that in December of 2011. Once we got this award, again, I presented actually to the Housing Authority to say that, again, we all did this together. This was not a one-man show for my part. The city of Urbana was part of this, the Housing Authority of Champaign County, city organizations, and also the board for the Housing Authority of Champaign County. The development team consists of the owner developer, the Benoit Group, owner also, the Housing Authority of Champaign County, program managers, Cindy Herrera and Associates, architect Tyson and Billy Architects, which is, they're out of Rockford, Illinois, civil engineer, Burns Clancy, which is a local civil engineering firm here, general contractor McShane Construction, which is out of Chicago, property manager, Wallach Properties, they're actually out of Ohio, and service coordinator, Development Service Group. On, in January, the city put out a kind of a permits issued for our Hamilton on the Park, which I thought was very relevant to us continually moving through the process of developing and now getting in construction with the project itself. And it just outlined what we were about to embark on as it related to the overall project from that perspective. Here's a quick development summary of the project. Total development cost is approximately $7.5 million. Total construction cost, roughly 4.9, located on 2.12 acres, whereby we have 36 townhomes and multifamily development units. Of the 36, we have 32 obtaining project-based rental assistance and four supportive housing units, which also will have project-based rental assistance on them also. So, we've got a mixed income within the 32 of 60% AMI and 30% AMI, and that is the area. area median income for those particular units. Here's a quick site plan, and this was real quick. We were working on this just to kind of illustrate where we were in, in progress while, and we've actually moved up a little bit faster. But I will say, the weather is killing us as it relates to doing any site improvements on, on the project. I remember, what was it, in 2012, you had days in February and, and March where there were 75 degrees and, and no snow, hardly any snow. And as soon as I start construction, the snow comes out every other week, or well, actually every week now. So we, we've been hit with freezing temperatures where it's hard to basically do anything in the ground or from rain or from snow. So our schedule has been impacted a little bit, but we're, we're still working on that to try to move that forward. But this kind of outlines some of the things. We, we again, on the site plan itself, will have a clubhouse with six other, five other buildings that will be locate, located on the site. And as I mentioned, some are full two, two-story townhome units and some are actually walk-up units that are flats similar to a multifamily apartment. But there are no breezeways, so each individual has their own entry door off of the fronts of the buildings and they have a continued look of a, of a townhome. This here is the construction progress photo of the clubhouse. Currently, actually, we, these, these pictures show you the footings that were being poured for the perimeter of the clubhouse. And actually, this slab has been completed on, on the clubhouse, so it's actually ready to go vertical if we could get some, some better weather. But as you see in the first picture, they were setting the forms and then be, being able to come in and pour those footers around the perimeter of the clubhouse itself. On this slide, as, I, I don't know if you all remember, we're actually doing an underground stormwater detention system. So we do not have an above-ground detention system. We're actually doing an underground system because of, we didn't, there wasn't enough land to be able to do that and accommodate all of the parking that was required for the property and also locate the buildings. So this is showing you in preparation for that, basically, the under, stormwater underground system is going right in the middle of, of the parking lot. So wherever you see the parking lot, that's where the underground detention system will be located. And we're cur, we actually have graded it out, they've put the, the gravel in, and on the next pictures, you'll see, these are basically the half-moon containers that will actually hold the water and slowly dissipate that out into the regular stormwater system, just like any detention pond that would slowly dissipate that water. This does this underground and then slowly dissipates it out to, to the regular system. Now this is a very costly system. I, I wouldn't have anybody else do it. If you, if you're in, if you have a lot of land, this is definitely not the route to go, but we had to do this for this particular project. And, you know, at the end of the day, it is an innovative type of construction method, but it is very costly, very expensive. Here's some pictures on the installation of the underground utilities that have taken place. These are actually at the clubhouse. We've actually poured three out of the other six slabs at this point in time, and we're waiting, hopefully the weather get better, but we've done most of the underground utilities on the entire project. Here are some of the perimeter footers for some of the buildings. As you can see, they're, again, they're forming that and then pouring those, those footers. And then they'll come back in and basically in the center portion of the slab, they'll pour the, the full slab foundation itself, and then that will cure for at least anywhere from 15 to 30 days. And then it will come out and do some testing on that, and then we'll be able to proceed and start going vertical. Again, if I can get some good weather, I, I would definitely be in a, in a framing mindset at this point in time.
It'll be 50 on Friday.
I need it really bad. Some of the interior amenities that we actually, we have, we've put together a package that we've utilized on all of our multifamily independent senior type of development deals. These are standards within our developments. We do not sway away from these standards. They're mandatory for whatever general contractor that we're working with or whatever development we're working on. Walk-in closets, 42-inch wood cabinets, nine-foot ceiling, ceilings, Energy Star appliances, Energy Star lighting. Again, we use some type of sustainability. We're using LEED, I mean, excuse me, Enterprise Green on this particular project. Low-flow showerheads, high-efficiency windows and doors, composite wood flooring in most of the common areas. So this is a floor system that actually, in what we've seen over time, a lot of times on the operational side of a development whereby if you have a lot of carpet and you have to turn that unit if someone moves out, you're typically tearing all that carpet out and putting in new. Well, with the resilient floor system, which is, it actually looks like it's simulated wood, but it, I mean, it's a great product. We use that because if there's a mark, you can easily just take out a small, small section and then put it back in and basically clean that and it, and it looks brand-new since, you know, from day one. The other thing that we do that is very, very, a great marketing tool for us, is very good for us, is we put washer and dryers in each unit. We don't like to build laundry facilities on properties. We actually like for the residents to have their own washer and dryer within their units to be able to, you know, if they have, you know, small children, families where they're not carrying baskets or whatever to laundry facilities where they can get that done within their units. So that's, that's something that we, we, we do on all of our projects. Next is the multifamily exterior and building amenities. We'll have outdoor recreation areas, picnic areas, pavilions and gazebos, playground. Some of the exterior building programs that we're using is hardy board siding with a combination of brick exterior and decorative columns and fencing around the property. And also, we'll have a clubhouse, as I mentioned. That clubhouse will have leasing office space, community room, and computer center. Here's our construction schedule. And as I mentioned, I've been talking with the general contractor, so these numbers are a little off, maybe about a few days. But our overall, we started around December 17th, and our anticipated goal was to get the clubhouse turned over around the 1st of May. That may move back a couple of weeks from the timeframe that you see here. But our overall timeframe to finish the construction is anticipated to complete on September 30th of 2013. We're actually in our initial marketing and lease-up phase whereby Wallach Properties is currently, we're actually getting ready to get banner signs out to begin that leasing process because what we want to do is, as you notice here, we're turning over buildings at a, at a, in a sequence. So the whole property won't be turned over all at one time. So we'll have units that'll be ready for renters to be able to lease and, and rent. Now, we've done some major coordination and talking with the planning department as it relates to how we get, you know, different certificate of occupancy's for each of those buildings and what it will take for us to do that whereby, one, we have to have all of our paving in, we have to have all of our landscaping in, so it is not a danger to any of the residents or potential residents that may come out to the property. But again, our, our anticipated goal is to, to finish the project by September 30th, and hopefully during that timeframe, it's nice and warm and all you guys can come out for our, our grand opening. As I mentioned, we're also doing MBE in Section 3, and this is just a kind of a participation report and worksheet that we do on a monthly basis with the general contractor. I also, I'm here at the, on Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday of this week, presenting to the Housing Authority in regards to where we are with MBE and, and Section 3. And actually, we're at 16.2% now, and our goal is to reach about 30% of MBE, WBE participation on the project. And also, on the next page, this is kind of our Section 3 list whereby we send out notices to past residents and also residents within the area to see if they have any qualifications related to any construction background, any labor-type background, and also on the, on the property management side. So we're not only doing it from a holistic standpoint of a subcontractor base, but also on the, on the labor base. So right now, we've actually, we've hired, and it's not shown here, we've hired four individuals from the neighborhood, and again, they have to go through various screenings and meet certain qualifications to be able to take on a, a job and position on the project. But again, we're extending that outside of the general, you know, subcontractor base to residents and people of the community for various opportunities. And with that, again, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate coming out and giving a presentation. Again, I apologize because I, I think I was on the agenda for last month and I had a, a little schedule change, so I, one, I want to apologize for that, but thank you again for letting me come up and speak tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Priestley? Diane?
How many bedrooms are in these units?
We have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. And the one-bedrooms, one bath, two-bedroom, two bath, and three-bedroom, two bath.
Okay. And will you have a local management office on-site, or how does that work?
Well, there'll, there'll be a property manager that will be on-site and a leasing agent.
Will they live on-site?
They, no, they won't live on-site. They, they actually have a, I know they, they're, they're working on three different other properties in the Champaign-Urbana area, but no, there won't be a property manager living on-site.
Do they, will they manage that 252 unit in Champaign as well?
Yes.
That you're building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah. When the rentals are, or the leases are signed, will the occupant be required to handle the cost of the utilities and water?
No, we, we actually cover the utilities and water, but there's a utility allowance that's set to the side for the resident, but we, we have trash included in that overall number. So no, the, the tenant will not have to go out and, and spend additional dollars for water. Now, they will have to pay for the electrical.
Right. Are they separately metered or are they getting a bill from a?
They'll, they'll be separately metered.
Separately metered, okay.
Yes.
So they can control their own?
Yes.
Heat and cooling?
That is correct. Yeah, I, I don't have a master switch for, for all units.
Robert?
I'd like to applaud you. I'm sitting in my work, so I want to applaud you. You for the MBE and the Section 3 and how that's working out. I remember in days past where we couldn't get that kind of, kind of numbers, so I applaud you on trying to get that.
Well, we, we actually, we, we had a workshop, an MBE and, and WBE and Section 3 workshop whereby a lot of subcontractors came out, they got to hear about the project. This is, so this is probably about, I'd say about two or three months before we even started construction. So we wanted to make sure we got out in the community, not after the fact that we're in construction and now we're trying to come back and do all of these initiatives related to the project, so.
Appreciate it.
Charlie?
Yeah, so I assume, I assume you touched base with the Black Chamber Commerce and groups like that?
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering if you could describe a little more the mix of income levels. I know you said it was a mixed-income property, but it sounded like there wasn't any market-rate units at all.
No, this particular property does not have any market-rate units. We utilize, instead of having the market-rate units, we wanted to provide some supportive housing units, which again, DSC will be the service coordinator. Just to kind of give you a backdrop or a background on why we used more of the supportive housing side. With IDA, which is the Illinois Housing Development Authority, over the last probably two or three years, they've had major initiatives as related to supportive housing. And projects score well with that supportive housing within their projects. So that was part of the reason why we were able to obtain the, the tax credits from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. But the ranges again, will have 30% AMI, you'll have the supportive housing units, and 60% AMI units.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Diane?
So it's not really mixed income?
It, it is mixed income because your, your 60% AMI is at a different income level than your 30%.
Define AMI, please?
Area.
Median income?
Income.
All right.
But none of it's really market rate, so both of those are different levels of subsidy for different low-income brackets.
That is correct.
Which, yeah.
Okay. I'll go to Eric because he didn't ask any yet.
What, what is the median income? What is the area here in which it's defined and what is our median income?
Well, it, it ranges for, basically, it would be for Champaign County. And as I recall, I think at a 60% level, it's roughly about $30,000, and at a 30% level, it's roughly about $18,000 to $20,000.
Yeah. And it varies on household size, so like?
Correct, yes. As you go up in the number of bedrooms and units, that, that number goes up. So if you had a four-bedroom unit at a 60% AMI, the area median income could be around $40-some thousand.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, and then, so I could understand the supportive housing units?
Yes.
Are these oriented to disability? So these are disability access people? So if you were wheelchair-bound, you'd be able to access that easily and you'd have the facilities that would have the?
Yes, a, as I mentioned, DSC will provide the, the services. The project-based rental assistance is providing the rental assistance for that unit. So we've got it covered from the service supporter's side and also from the rental subsidy side.
I have one more question. What's your price point for rents, then?
Since, since we're utilizing project-based rental assistance under the, and, and the Housing Authority of Champaign County has actually moved to work under the HUD program, so, which means basically for the fair market rent, for say, for instance, for a one-bedroom, and the, the fair market rent was $700, well, the PBR, PBR would be 110% of that, of that fair market value.
You're using $700?
I was just, it just, it was an example. I'm, I'm just giving you an example. But our, our price ranges from our lowest, I think, is roughly 650 upwards to, I think, our three-bedrooms get up to 9, 910.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Good luck with the weather and the construction.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, next tonight, we have an ordinance. This is from Public Works. Ordinance 2013-3-25, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. This is for a section of Kinch Street. Bill? Bill Gray is Director of Public Works. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. This item before you has been brought to the Traffic Commission the last two meetings. Their, the commission heard comments from area residents who were not pleased with the restriction removal of parking, particularly on those stretches. If you looked at the exhibit between Michigan and Pennsylvania and Florida and Vermont, where there would be no parking on either side of the street, homeowners had concerns, particularly in those areas, and concerns in general. In any event, the Traffic Commission is recommending per the Bicycle Master Plan that parking would be removed. There, there'd be no parking anytime on the west side of Kinch between Florida and Washington Street. And this would be in an effort to accommodate bike lanes, which is part of a Safe Route to School grant. And if approved, this would be implemented later this year.
Any council member questions?
I'll, I'll just make a comment. I brought through there this weekend to, to double-check it and high noon-ish, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, one car in the entire stretch from Florida to, to Washington. There's, the driveways are wide, so there's lots of parking on side streets. There really looks like there's a lot of capacity for parking, and, and when people have visitors, they've got space around the side. And I think parking's available on one side too for parts of the street as well, right, Bill?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, there's a small block area there where they're, where the, where the road narrows and they can't maintain parking on one side. So I, I think this is a very doable project, and I'm sorry for the couple, the block that gets impacted, but hopefully that this will encourage kids and, and their parents to go with them, get them started, to start riding to school like they used to do 20, 30, 40 years ago. So I'd recommend we send this to council with approval.
Okay, a motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? Dennis, yeah?
Yeah, this was, this was in discussion in Traffic Commission, you know, I'm on the Traffic Commission. It came up several different times. I think we had about three houses that had really, I think, I would call them pretty serious concerns about their, their parking. serious concerns about their parking. Large families who come together fairly often to meet at the home and they're concerned that they can't park, you know, in front of their homes. Unfortunately, this, in the layout or the plating of this stretch of our city, the width of the roads varies on certain blocks. I'm not quite sure why, but certain blocks do impede into the road by about, I don't know, four feet more than others. It's that, the tragic four-foot, you know, difference between alignments of curbs. And so, it's those blocks and it's mainly between Michigan Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue going north-south on Kinch Street that, where there's just not enough room to allow for parking across the street when the bike lane is demarked. So, I mean, we did discuss other ways of handling this project, you know, should this be a bike path or should it merely be a bike route, which does appear north-south on other parts of the, of the city in this area. And, you know, it could almost be a toss-up and the City Council members could talk about this if they wanted to, to preserve parking, more parking on the street. If you look at a aerial map, aerial photograph of this stretch, you will see that most families have a two-car garage, garage driveways. And so, it does accommodate multiple cars per family. But this was not a non, this was contested by a few people and they may not be all that happy to hear about it. The one thing I will say that because it is part of the Safe Routes to School program and there is a elementary school at the very terminus on the north side on Washington Street, and that's Prairie School, and that's a significant, you know, destination for, for families. And there's also one on the south side on Florida, very close by. This street in particular just seems like it wants to be a bike path, so we approved it in traffic court and certainly there could be discussion about it. I don't think anybody's approached tonight, the City Council, to contest it, so there you go.
Any other comments or questions?
Bill, I was wondering if you could speak briefly to something that was mentioned about speed of drivers and that you, that was an issue you all would still be looking into. Did I understand that right and what's, what's that aspect?
There were some concerns about the speed on Kinch Street, north and south, and actually the installation of bike lanes actually will narrow the actual travel width of the streets and, you know, give that confinement, if you will, of a driver in which has the additive benefit of reducing speeds versus right now, it's a wide-open pavement where vehicles, drivers, you know, typically go faster because it's a more wide-open type of a driving surface. But with the addition of bike lanes, actually, it has this effect of reducing the lane width, if you will, the traveling width and typically psychologically, drivers drive a little bit slower, so that may be a benefit here. But as a separate effort though, staff will look at the speeds on Kinch to see if there's some additional items that should be looked at, but that was not part of this particular request.
Okay, thank you. And Eric?
Yeah, I don't know, obviously I have no way of knowing exactly when this view was, was created, but I'm looking at the satellite picture and there isn't a car parked on the street.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, all of us have times when there's people parking and not and would have you, and I think the point is, is that for those who need on-street parking in those two-block stretches, it will not be any on-street parking anymore, so you would have to go to either an adjacent east-west street, you know, or a neighbor's driveway, that sort of thing. So, that's, you know, one of the main concerns.
Okay. Any other council member questions or discussion on this one? Okay, so the motion, oh yeah, Diane?
Do we have an option of evaluating this after a year, 18 months to see how it's working or if it's creating a real hardship for people? Have we done that on any other of the bike routes?
Sometimes we look at, you know, prior to removing parking, looking at the percentage or amount of people that park, you know, on streets. And similar to observations you're hearing tonight has been our observation too. So, this is not admittedly a high-demand on-street parking area compared to other areas in the community. So, to answer your question, having looked at posts afterwards, not that often that I can recall, per se, I thought you were going to ask more about bicycle usage, which is factored into our Bike Master Plan update. There's a component of this update that we will be doing bicycle surveys on bike lanes where we've installed them and we want to get a better baseline for that information. But, no, I, I don't recall going back and looking at how many on-street parking was or was not used.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, the motion was to send this to council and recommend approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Okay, that carries, we'll see that at City Council in April. And next tonight, we have three items that are all related and I believe we could take them in omnibus fashion. They are three different resolutions, all regarding the Main Street project. I'll read them very briefly. Resolution 2013-0311R, authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement for federal participation with Clark Deeds. Resolution 2013-0312R, this is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the local agency state agreement for federal participation with IDOT. And finally, Resolution 2013-0313R, the resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. So, Gail Jamison, tell us about these three items.
This is the continuing effort to get toward bidding the ITEP portion of the Main Street project, which is from Grove East to the city limits. We had, in the grant, we had allocated funds for the construction engineering phase services and Clark Deeds has given us a proposal for those and we've reviewed it and approved it, or agree with the numbers they put in it. And we have a draft or the agreement which is attached and a resolution which would authorize execution of that, approval and execution of the agreement. In order to spend those grant funds, we have to enter into a local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation. A copy of that local agency agreement is attached to the memo and there's a resolution approving and authorizing the signature of that local agency agreement. It basically allocates the funds, the local funds and the grant funds and the different groups, and it allocates for both the construction engineering and the actual construction of the project. In the construction of the project, we're funding this out of, with our state motorfield tax funds. In order to expend those funds, we have to pass a resolution authorizing the expenditure of those funds. That resolution is attached to the agreement also. All three of these items are kind of linked together and all have to be submitted to IDOT for approval prior to bidding the project and the bid opening is scheduled for June 14th.
Okay, any questions for Gail? Charlie?
Yeah, Gail, one quick one. The, the set of railroad tracks that go into Solo Cup, are you doing anything special in construction that, any modifications there, anything new?
We're milling and resurfacing up two, but we're not doing anything actually to the tracks other than sidewalks and, and bike lanes through there.
Okay, so, the, inside the tracks is in pretty good shape or does that get?
We're not doing anything at all to the tracks.
The railroad is?
Well, that's the railroad's responsibility and, and if they did redo that not that long ago and if it gets to the point that it needs to be redone, we would contact them and persuade them or ask them to come in and fix it.
Yeah. Railroad tracks can be a little bit nasty for bicyclists, so.
At least this one's 90 degrees to the road instead of an angle and, and it's a very low-usage crossing, so it's not a high priority for the railroad, other than when you want to work close to it and then it becomes a real high priority, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to move all three resolutions, 11, 12, and 13, to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any other discussion or questions on these? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, Gail. We'll see those and go ahead.
I just wanted to indulge, if you indulge me for a moment. I've scheduled a public meeting at the Civic Center and a notice will go out tomorrow for the 4th of April from 6 to 8. We have all, the construction plans are done for all three segments of this project. The Race and Main Street intersection, signal improvements, those plans are done, submit to IDOT. It is currently on the IDOT letting scheduled for April 26th. The Cedar to Vine portion, which is basically the curb work, the ramp work, the milling, resurfacing, restriping of the pavement, and some signal work at Broadway and Vine Street is scheduled to be bid on the 19th of April. And then, this last segment would be bid on, in June 14th. Construction's scheduled to be done around the end of November on all three. They'll go, they'll operate concurrently and with luck, we might have the same contractor for all of them, who knows? We'll know that when we bid it. But I'm going to send a notice out tomorrow. I'll email the council members and the mayor a copy directly and the department heads so that they know when the meeting is. We're going to do a newspaper press release for it and I'm going to do door hangers for everybody from Cedar Street all the way out to Dewey, probably the first part of that week, letting them know what's going, that we're having a meeting. It is information-only, the plans are done, are approved by all the agencies, and you know, there's not anything that's going to change on the design, but it's letting people know what we're going to do and letting them know the schedule. And we'll do a little presentation at 6:30 that night, kind of give them the schedule and then we'll be around after that or before and after that to answer questions. We have the plans there for people to look at.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Oh, Diane?
Can I ask a snow removal question?
Oh, yeah? Bill Gray's here, so he may be able to help answer it. Go ahead.
I imagine you've had a couple phone calls today about snow removal, but could you review again how you decide which neighborhoods to plow first and in what order? And then, I had a call from a couple of people wanting to know why cul-de-sacs aren't plowed at the same time the cross street is plowed, because there are some cul-de-sacs down by me which still haven't been plowed. So, can you explain the reasoning behind that?
Sure. First of all, our snow removal plan is on the website and it goes into a lot of detail as to how the plan works. But basically, we always start out with our primary and secondary streets, which are our busier streets in town, our Vine Streets and Windsor Roads and Lakin Avenues and those streets. So, those are going to be the streets because of the sheer volume and the importance of those streets, particularly getting to hospitals and important centers. So, we'll typically plow those streets, get them opened up. In this particular case, the snow intensity was so great, you know, one to two inches per hour, we were literally doing mostly those streets Sunday afternoon into the evening just to try to keep them open. Later that evening though, we did break off to try to at least make one pass down all the residential streets exclusive of cul-de-sacs now, just to allow people, in the event of emergency, what have you, they have at least one lane of traffic to get through. Then we finished up, again, with those primaries and secondaries to try to get them all opened up. So, it wasn't until really this morning, early this morning, that we got into plowing residential streets and I'm told that probably before midnight or by midnight tonight, we'll have plowed all the residential streets in town. The residential sections are divided up into 15 areas. And again, each area is defined in the snow plan, which is on our website. And every year, we change the order of the residential areas, which gets the interest of a lot of people. So, if you're first, you know, this year, you might be second next year and you move down through the list, but every year, we rotate that list around so that we try to be as fair as possible. Obviously, one winter, like last year, we had very little snow, so if you're first, it probably didn't matter. This year, if you're last, it matters because of the snow we just had. But we try to be fair and that's how the plan has been. With respect to cul-de-sacs, they're admittedly on the lower of the priority compared to local streets. It typically takes different types of equipment also to do cul-de-sacs because of the maneuverability. We can't send down many cul-de-sacs on large snow pile truck and this varies now. We need a more nimble type of piece of equipment, which is usually a rubber triode end loader. And we only have a few pieces of those sorts of equipments that do the, bless you, that do the cul-de-sacs, but cul-de-sacs are, take a lot of time. It's much less efficient in removing snow because of the nature, what they are. And also because of the quantity of snow, we have a policy set by City Council about one or two 12-inch storms ago, that when we have greater than, you know, nine, 10 inches, we'll also plow alleys, otherwise typically we don't, unless it's in a neo-traditional alley area like the Savannah Green where those alleys are actually the driveway, if you will, to the garages. But we are plowing alleys too and that will be a lower priority too, but we'll be getting to those this evening.
Do you plow alleys before all the cul-de-sacs?
Alleys are last.
Alleys are last.
Yeah. Except for, again, something like the Savannah Green subdivision. We will be, after midnight, hauling snow away downtown. We'll probably be doing that the next three nights. We'll also be doing campus hauling away, snow removal. We'll probably, the Public Works Director's Office will send out a sidewalk snow removal declaration probably around noon tomorrow for 24 hours and driving around. There are some property owners that are going to be challenged to clear the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
But hope spring's eternal and we hope that things are melted here by this weekend or early next week, so.
Spring is around.
But does that answer your question?
Yes.
Hopefully, okay.
Okay. Charlie?
Since, since we've raised the snow removal issue, I, I actually was out and about last night on skis and it always gets annoying that the snowplows beat me, because I have to, you know, so anyway, the snowplows were out and about. I thought they did a really bang-up job to get, get done what they did. The major streets were, were clear, oh, 7, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock for sure. And, and I know that they made an effort to go down a lot of the residential streets at least one pass, you know, so there was one lane that was open and that was, that was a really nice thing to have done, so. And it was a real bite to ski northward last night while it was going, so, yeah. Anyway, I thought, I thought, I thought the snow removal went really well and I know there was, there's some, some new staff members out there learning and so, so there's some things to learn still. There's some tricks on Kohler Avenue, for example, that I don't think the new guys know about, the, the little cutouts on all the corners there where the drains are, so. But, but it, it is a challenge to do that much snow that fast.
Okay, well, thanks and Bill, pass along our thanks to the, all the crews for the hard work.
Appreciate your support, yeah.
Next, next on tonight's agenda was the closed session. Charlie?
I'm going to go into closed session for property acquisition issues pursuant to five Illinois Consolidated statutes, 120 over 2C5.
Second.
A second. Okay, that's a motion by Charlie and a second by Eric was the first one I heard. We have a roll call, I believe, on this.
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, so we will.
We'll be back, but there's no action after this.
We will go upstairs for closed session? Yeah, there are no more action items on the agenda after that, so we will come back to open session just to adjourn after this. Yeah, does, does someone want to make a motion to?
I make a motion that we enter open session again. Second?
A motion by Dennis and second by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries, okay, we're back in open session and there's no other business items tonight, so I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.